You ready?
Yep.
Okay, if you're calling me in order, please. Mrs. Kropaski?
Here.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. President.
Vision and mission statement of the Austintown Schools. The Austintown Local School District is a united community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. We provide an inspiring education and strengthens and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
All right, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to add an addendum, item number nineteen, to the agenda.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes. And I'd also like to make a motion to adjust number fourteen speed three on the Fitch marching band. We need to change that date from Wednesday, May nineteenth, to Thursday, May twentieth of twenty-one.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item five. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the agenda for the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one Board of Education's regular April session. Take the vote. Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
On to number six, student presentations.
Hi, my name is Madison Jeffield, and I'm a sophomore at Austintown High School. I took a course under William Klein called Music in Society. It was an elective semester course, and through that course, I was able to write a study called The Impact Television Has on Classical Music. As a young classical musician, I noticed that a lot of people found classical music to be something that was a boring and outdated musical genre, when in reality, a lot of the young colleagues I worked with always found classical music to be an exciting and more alive-than-ever genre. I wanted to discover why many people thought that it was such an outdated genre. So through research, I found that a lot of television programming and shows portray classical music in a negative light that made an audience believe that classical music was partially negative, boring, and outdated. Through this research study, guided by two research questions that are on this board, I tried to discover, through interviews conducted over FaceTime because of social distancing guidelines, I wanted to see what an audience would say if I showed them three different clips of classical music on three different programs. One was a classical music concert, one was a television programming, and one was an episode of Brenton Towne. And through this, they noticed, I noticed, how classical music was portrayed differently on each show. And through my interviews, I noticed that they always found the classical music concerts to be kind of boring and outdated, yet when they were shown a television program, they noticed that it was shown as boring, and they always said that clip of music was always the most boring. So through this study, I showed how television portrays classical music in a negative light, when in reality, it is probably the most upcoming genre and is more alive than ever. Thank you.
Next up is junior Jocelyn Selby.
Hello, my name is Jocelyn Selby, and I'm a junior at Fitch High School, and I was also a part of the class under William Klein of Music in Society. So the class was about how music affects society and how we interact with it. Well, I believe we've all heard the line that you shouldn't enter the music industry. It's risky, it's a very unstable career path. And I've always wondered, why do people think so? I myself want to attend Carnegie Mellon University after high school graduation and write music for Broadway musicals. I love composing, and I never understood why we looked so negatively upon this amazing career path. So the most common career paths are education, teaching in schools like choir and band, and then performance. There's a bunch of other careers that we could be looking at that people aren't talking enough about. So I conducted five interviews with five students from Fitch High School. Two of these students, no music education whatsoever. They weren't band students, choir students, or orchestra students, no music. One student was a choir student, another a band student, and the final one was an orchestra student. And I asked them, why do you think music is not seen as a core subject and owing extracurriculars? And many of them said, because teachers look down upon it as secondary education, as something just to not focus on the classroom. Math is more important because it's a more stable career path. And also, parents play a big factor in this, too, because parents often discourage their kids from entering any music field. So I hope I can help people learn more about this stigma that's around music and help them grant out more and see the beauty that's in the music industry like I have. Thank you.
Next up, item seven, student recognition. Alex Hartso, a senior.
I will introduce to you, this is Alex Hartso, a senior. He actually won, and Mrs. McLenn went back as many years as she could remember, and we've never had a winner from Fitch High School, so it's pretty exciting. It's a big honor. It's the Franklin B. Walter All Scholar, All Scholastic Award recipient, and that's Alex, so we want to recognize him, and he will go on and then compete at the state level, is my understanding, right? Yeah, not a competition, but yeah, his name goes in, so he could even go further. So we just wanted to recognize Alex and congratulate him on this, it's really a big honor, so.
So I guess I'm supposed to say something now, so. I just kind of want to thank, you know, you guys for being very supportive of the school that I'm in, allowing me the opportunity to a quality education. Also, the teachers, who may or may not watch this, to them for helping me succeed and really excelling in a way that I know would not have been otherwise possible, so, thank you.
That's a big, that's a big win. On to item number eight. Mr. Ventresco is going to start us off with technology update.
Good evening. I think everybody would agree with me, it's fantastic to see live student recognition back at board meetings. It's been a while. A lot of, still putting out fires, Mr. Sherwood's phrase, I'm keeping that one. We completed our twenty-first year of E-Rate certification this morning. That's always fun. The Chromebooks that I ordered in July got here March first. So those, one hundred and sixty of those have been deployed for student use already, so that's been very helpful. Some big projects that are on the slate for the summer. I meet with my last manufacturer tomorrow, we're going out for another copier contract. We're due. Refreshing part of the Chromebook fleet is going to happen this summer, and it's been eight years, time for PC refresh, so a lot of fun technology things. I don't want to steal any of the principals' thunder, because LST has been happening for, or online testing has been happening for a month now, so I'm sure they'll have something to say about that. Credit recovery, spring intervention, that's also occurring, all they do, all on computers. I want to give a special thank you to our bus drivers, who were our sample group for our time clocks. They've been professional and a lot of fun to work with. Last thing, this is a surprise for the principals. I've been kicking this around, I want all my Chromebooks back, so we have to take Chromebooks back in, because here's why. The fall was rough, because we had so much damage, so many things that sat over the summer, that when they showed up, they're like, hey, we need two thousand Chromebooks. Five hundred of them need fixed. So I need to get those back so we can get back into our normal summer maintenance. I'll provide some better details on that as I get them together, is all I have. Thank you.
On to item number nine. We'll start with reports from Fitch High School.
All right, good evening from Fitch High School. In spite of COVID and everything that goes along with it, we're quite busy. Congratulate to all of our spring sports athletes, they're off to a really strong start, doing really well. We are wrapping up our student scheduling for next year. We had our eighth graders come over today, and we had a real nice, it was about an hour and a half, assembly where lead departments and different electives presented, and some of the extracurricular programs were presented to our eighth graders, so that was very nice. Those kids now, their core classes have already been scheduled, but they now are electronically scheduling all of their elective requests, so that was kind of very nice to do this year. State testing for the high school starts tomorrow, and we're going to do it all through next week, and then we're in testing mode, AP exams begin in May, so we're pretty much the next five or six weeks, nothing but tests. Spring intervention and our credit recovery program is up and running well. We have a district art show that a lot of Fitch students are participating in that starts this weekend, and next weekend at Eastwood Mall. The students have the musical Mama Mia, which actually starts tonight, it runs through Saturday, so if you get a chance, please go to that and support the kids. And then next week, we are excited, we didn't get to do this last year, so we're doing two of them. We have our juniors, will be inducted into the National Honor Society, and then last year's juniors, which are now seniors, they'll also have a formal induction ceremony, and that is next Thursday, so a lot going on. Thank you.
Emily, going to cover the middle school for us, please.
Good evening. I feel like Mr. Swabel stole a lot of my thunder here. Our big accomplishment this past week with state testing is that the middle school, we successfully got over one hundred and sixty students in and out every day, from option two and option three, our remote students, to get tested and get that done. That was quite an undertaking, and we want to thank the students, our staff, and families, and Mr. Ventresco for helping to make that run smoothly. Also, wanted to remind of the district art show coming up, starting on the twenty-third, out at the Eastwood Art Gallery by Dillard's in the mall. We have a lot of really young, talented artists, so we would encourage everybody to get out there and support them. And lastly, I would like to thank the leadership at Fitch for hosting our eighth graders today. They were able to get their core scheduling done and get some more information, and I know that they feel a lot more comfortable coming back to the building today about transition to high school next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Papagallo, with the intermediate update.
Happy Earth Day. Doing my part, I'm wearing a recycled shirt from two years ago, from Christine Mazzella, so. And it is fifty years, it's an old shirt, some recycling, it's good. Yesterday was Administrative Professional Day. Shout out to our secretaries, Ms. Pat, Joni Mitchell, Sandra Mitchell, and actually all the secretaries in our district, they are amazing, friendly, welcoming, and they're on the front lines, and sometimes the phone calls they answer and the things they do, it's not as pleasant, but they do an absolutely fantastic job. I love all three of these ladies. We did kick off state testing back towards the end of March, we took parts one and two of their ELA. Third and fifth grade took their math test this past week. Fourth grade's going to be taking math, one and two, next week, and fifth grade's finishing up by second science next Wednesday. So far, the attendance for the test and the completion rate's been huge. I mean, as I thought, with the option two and three students, we would be all over the place, but we've actually have two kids that need to make up the ELA out of our whole building. And then we have a lot of kids who completed this week, so that's, I'm pretty excited about that. Thanks to Tom Ventresco, was worried about Chromebooks, but he had those Chromebooks come in, we did get a nice supply of them, and we had plenty for testing, so that went up really well. We kicked off spring intervention, it's up and running also, it's been pretty successful. The children actually like it a lot, the parents love it. One kid tried sneaking home, thinking he forgot about it, and mom ran him back up to complete after school, so it's pretty cool. Shout out to Kathleen Brown, she was a student teacher last year, and we were actually very lucky to hire her. She does a fantastic job, especially with our students in MD, and I happened to walk through, and the things that she was doing, and having them playing, it was so nice. It was just, it was very nice, and she does a fantastic job. We're having a book fair, May third through the seventh, thanks to our PTA, and we're also going to have Parking Lot Bingo, that'll be a first one. Bingo's a pretty big event at our building, but COVID, you know, we're trying to get a little creative, so we're going to be doing, selling parking spaces, and they're going to have either out on the radio, or I think they're going to try to go through, they're like an AM radio station, they're still working out the big kinks of that, but that's a go for May fourteenth. Fifth grade, Camp Fitch, the May tenth through eleventh, and we're finishing out the year with our annual fun day. That's going to be in May, towards the end of May, so hopefully it doesn't snow, you never know, and, but we're going to have some COVID-safe activities and just end up the year on a positive note. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the elementary school, Captain Dorish, please.
Good evening, everybody. These are the happenings at AES. Our preschool is planning their first completion ceremony that will be held in May, that will be in our cafeteria, of course, following all COVID guidelines. We're also planning our K transition meetings. The really neat thing about our preschoolers is they're actually going to have an opportunity to go sit into our kindergarten classrooms of the teachers that they will be assigned the next year, so they kind of get some upfront and personal experience in our kindergarten classes, and we're excited to be doing that. We also are trying to plan some normal events at the end of the year. For second grade, we will have our wax museum coming up as usual, and our farewell, of course, making adjustments so that it is safe for everybody. First grade will be creating their books, their authors, and we're working out some details for the author's tee, hoping to get a tent so we can be outdoors and follow those COVID guidelines. Working retention guidelines are now completed, shared with staff, and we're going to be up and implementing those. And AES has made their adjustments for their report cards as well, so that we are ready to be into nine weeks next year, as the rest of the district is. Our reading adoption committee meetings will be held starting very soon, with the goal at the end of the year to make an adoption for next year, and the teachers are really excited about it. Those pilot programs are going really well. Finally, a shout out to our secretaries, yesterday being Secretary's Day, Jenny Andrews, Diane Wyllam Cohen, and Kathy Malott, they go above and beyond their duties every day, you know, they're the first face that people see, and they make AES the place to be, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no signatures for public comment, so on to number eleven, treasure consent items. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the following items by consent action A through C.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item twelve. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the appointment of James Pank to the administrative position of School Operations Manager effective August first, twenty-twenty-one, with salary and benefits in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item thirteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the appointment of Jeffrey Wilson, Fitch Girls Basketball Coach, effective for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, twenty-four percent excitement.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, mind coming up for a quick moment here? You're dressed so nicely, I figured.
Just want to thank Mr. Pank, Mr. Capazello, and the board for giving me this opportunity. Austintown Schools has been part of my life for half my life, and hopefully another half, and just thank my wife and my son Pat, my wife Jen, my son Patrick, and my crazy one, Sydney, making all that noise, so I appreciate it and won't let you down, thanks.
Item fourteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following items, A through C, by consent action. Second. Take the vote. Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Item fifteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the consent action, by consent action, the following MOU, binding between the Austintown Local School District and the Austintown Education Association, OEA NEA, to accept a twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar with modifications to Article five point zero six regarding the number of teacher days, number of people contact instructional days, the number of professional development continuous improvement days, comp days, conference days, administrator-driven meetings, and community engagement programming as presented. All other parts of Article five point zero six will be followed in accordance with the CBA in effect from August twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, to August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item sixteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the administrative contracts as follows. I'll read these. Number one, Andrea Apiza, Assistant Treasurer, three-year contract effective August first, twenty-twenty-one, to July thirty-first, twenty-four, two hundred forty-eight days per year, salary in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule. Salvatore Maiarana, Assistant Principal of Fitch High School, three-year contract effective August first, twenty-one, to July thirty-first, twenty-four, two hundred ten days per year, salary in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule. Angel Owens, Building Principal at Austintown Intermediate School, three-year contract effective August first, twenty-one, to July thirty-first, twenty-four, two hundred fifteen days per year, salary in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule. Rory Titeman, EMIS Coordinator, three-year contract effective July first, twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, two hundred forty-eight days per year, salary in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule. And Anna Angie Maraz, Transportation Supervisor, two-year contract effective July first, twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty-three, two hundred forty-eight days per year, salary in accordance with the board-approved administrative salary schedule.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Seventeen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following resolution, whereas the Austintown Local School District Board of Education has adopted a resolution that requires students to complete a more challenging curriculum that is otherwise required by state law to be eligible to earn a diploma issued by the district. And whereas House Bill sixty-seven was adopted into law as an emergency measure which authorized school districts to modify graduation requirements for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year in response to challenges presented by the pandemic. And whereas, as a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic and its impact on the educational system, the board has determined that it is in the best interest of the district students to modify graduation requirements for this school year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Austintown Local School District Board of Education adopts Sections one, two, three, and four of the resolution in compliance with all applicable requirements of Ohio Revised State.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item eighteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve by consent action, following items A through C.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item nineteen. Addendum. Approve the recommendation by the board to appoint Timothy Kelty as Superintendent Pro Ten for out-of-district and/or absences of the acting Superintendent Dave Capazello for the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
I'd like a motion for the next work session, in regular session, to be Thursday, May the twentieth, work session three PM in the Dr. Ritchie Room, five PM regular session here. Take the vote. Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Today was Education Advocacy Day that the Educational Service Center put on. I know Mrs. Kropaski attended, and so did I, I don't think anyone else was able to because of work commitments. One of the hot-button things that was talked about, the General Assembly is discussing the state report card reform. So legislators in the Ohio House of Representatives and the Ohio Senate recently proposed bills, again, proposed, to revise the state report card for K through twelve school buildings and districts. The efforts are led by Representative Don Jones, who was there today, and Philip N. Robinson, Jr., and this is a bipartisan effort. They are, they have been working on this for the past couple of years, and one of the things that was remarked, it is our goal through the entirety of this process to simplify the state report card. the state report card, give it real meaning, make it more proactive, while continuing, of course, to comply with federal guidelines, and this new approach will make the report cards easier for students, teachers, parents, and school officials to understand and learn from, so stay tuned. It's just been introduced, and we know how sometimes legislation can go slowly. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
This is Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.